Welcome, everyone, to our March monthly public council meeting. Thank you for coming, and we hope that you have an opportunity to express your opinions at the appropriate time. And let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I just want to make sure that Terry's on his booth in his chair.
Yeah, okay.
That we're okay. And I do have to call Scott.
Oh, they're not hooked up yet?
Not yet.
Okay, I was...
Excuse me, Terry, are we on? Bear with me, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Hello, Virginia. This is Judith upstairs. I just want to make sure that you can hear me.
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to put you on hold and conference Scott in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Scott. Can you hear me?
I can hear you live from Effingham, Illinois.
Thank you very much. You're on speakerphone to the audience, and I'm going to conference you in with Virginia, and I'll check back right away. Hold on, please.
Okay.
Virginia, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Scott, can you hear me?
I can hear both of yous.
Thank you both. The meeting's about to start.
Actually, the meeting has started, Scott. Now we can resume now that everybody's plugged in. May we have a roll call, Virginia?
Yes. Mary Anderson?
Yeah.
Captain Abelhart?
Here.
Helen Milahal?
Here.
Andrew Lubin?
Here.
Lisa Minas?
Here.
Amika Murray?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Scott Robinson?
Here.
And Nancy Sherlock?
Here.
Our borough solicitor is with us?
Yes, Scott Holbert, on behalf of Flagler &amp; Associates.
Thank you, and of course, our borough manager?
Yes, I'm here.
And I believe, actually, Mr. Catalia's going to take a presentation. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia. As Virginia pointed out, the first item on the agenda is a presentation by Mike Catalio on behalf of our code enforcement officer, Barry Islett.
Evening. Thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming.
First of all, I just wanted to say hi. Sorry it took almost a year to get here, but, you know, we finally made it happen. So it's nice to see everybody smiling face in person, and of course, Scott on the phone will soon be smiling. So things are very active in town. You know, we're moving along, getting really heavy into the fire inspections and getting properties cleaned up. I can tell you that's a monumental task. So we're chipping away at the iceberg as best we can. We're trying to get ahead of as much as we possibly can before grass starts to grow, and now we end up having to deal with that. What we can say is to the residents and folks in town, you know, we can only do stuff if we hear about it. So some of the stuff, you know, people are like, oh, I've been complaining, you know, okay, how long or, you know, did you send it through the right avenue? So we encourage people to come forward, send it through the portal on the website, or give the office a call so we can put some attention to that. We prioritize it to the best of our abilities to make sure that safety is number one, and then, you know, we work on the severity of the issues in a pecking order. We've been having a lot of success at the local district court. The judge sees what we're trying to do. She's fantastic. So we have a good rapport there, and we're not there to find people. We're there to get compliance, right? So we want people to clean up their property. We want to cut grass. Some of the folks, unfortunately, where we're finding properties, they've passed away, and what we're finding is the next of kin has zero interest in maintaining the property. So you can see that kind of pop, you know, it grows by itself. The houses become in severe disrepair, and people are unresponsive. So we're trying to move that along and get ahead of that as we can. From a technology standpoint, you should be seeing the borough website, department forums online, so people can start filling them out, PDF right online, submitting them via electronic. We're really trying to cut down on the amount of paper that comes into the building. In this day and age, we're in 2023, a PDF should be able to solve a lot of it, and it helps immensely. It cuts down on the overhead with the office staff downstairs, and it really turns the permits around expeditiously. We still have some bridge over from the previous inspection firm that we're, you know, getting projects moving that have kind of fallen by the wayside a little bit. One specifically on the back of Ashland Distillery, a really nice brew pub that's going to be coming in there. So we got that back up and moving. You know, we had the Venus place there with the Friendly's coming into town. We just had a planning commission meeting. You'll be seeing that soon with the revitalization of the plaza up there. We're going to see all new lighting, new storefronts, possibly another tenant, possibly a bank coming in on one of the tenant spaces. So we're really trying to get the businesses to reinvest into Morrisville, bring these shopping centers up to code. I can tell you, as you see in the council packets, we've had some challenges in the fire inspection world. Some, I'm very surprised we haven't had a larger incident of a fire breaking out in town and specifically in the shopping centers in some of the businesses that we're encountering. So it's concerning on our end, but what is nice is the business owners are open, welcoming, and we treat that as more of an educational thing than penalizing them. So we like to work with the businesses to make sure things are moving in the right direction, so that we're here as their partner versus the code departments coming here. So we like to build those relationships and keep things moving and make things nice in town. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to say hi, offer you a little bit of an update of what I have, you know, to offer, and if there's any questions, please let me know. I'm always available to any of you outside of today. All right, so that's, you can go through, the manager will connect us if you have specific questions, so.
I have one, I have one question. No, really, a question or request, so two things. Like, if you could reiterate that you just, that Barry Islett just started recently in the borough, and the fact that if people use the portal now, that it's a, it's a, if there's, there's a new game in town, right? You guys are different than the last ones, that you will respond to the portal, and that you're, basically, you're a different company, and, and the whole code enforcement has changed since you guys took over. If you could just reiterate that, because I know there's residents that roll their eyes when I say use the portal. They say, I've been using the portal, and it's like, it must just go into a black hole because nothing ever got done.
Yeah, no, good points. So it goes in the portal, goes right into Tracer, gets, you know, assigned to somebody, and it gets followed up on. The other thing, you know, we've been here since, what, April, late March-ish, we've tackled a ton. Like, the amount of stuff that's gotten completed is, is there. The problem is that there's still stuff hanging out there that draws your attention, because either you live near it, or, you know, you walk by it, or whatever. You're going to have that. The other thing is, not everything that comes into the portal is valid. What you perceive to be a code violation may not in fact be one. Someone has stuff in their yard. They're messy. Not everybody is, you know, lives in a square box and everything's clean. So unfortunately, yeah, gotta balance what's stuff versus trash. We like to focus on the trash. With our stuff, we give them a little nudge and say, hey, you probably should straighten up a little bit. This is getting a little bit out of control. All right? There's some stuff that we're finding when we go to houses. That wasn't even the worst part of it. The worst part of it was like in the backyard that you couldn't see from the street. When we had gotten access to the property, we're like, oh, look, there's a camper back here that nobody saw, right? Those are the type of things that we're finding. So hook that up.
Could you also reiterate to the residents that any complaint that they put in is not, not going to be repeated as to who put in the complaint? That it'll stay confidential?
Correct. I mean, that's the policy. The name doesn't get out. If it, if you're a neighbor, though, I mean, some people can figure things out on who's reporting it, but we don't divulge that information. That information does not get pushed out to anybody, you know, on that end. The only time that a resident would find out is if we had to call somebody as a witness, you know, to, into court, if it's like getting to that level. But that's, you know, no, we keep everything confidential.
So the resident should feel secure in doing that?
Absolutely. Anonymous does not help. I can tell you that, especially if you're the next door neighbor. We need to call you to get, sometimes to get access from the property. The Constitution protects people from just trespassing on their properties. So if we need access to a neighboring property, your information actually helps us out.
Thank you, Mike. I just wanted to echo what Scott Robinson said, that I think that what you and your colleagues from Barry Islett have been doing for the past year has been far and away a breath of fresh air compared to your successor, to predecessors. And I think that you have us on, moving in the right direction, and I look forward to working with you on the Vagan Property Review Committee. Thanks.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I agree 100%.
Anything else?
Mike, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me. Have a wonderful night.
You as well.
Mike, you mind bringing up the Eastside and G for us? Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the public comment section of the meeting, and first is Nicole Robina. Will you state your name and address?
Nicole Robina, 897 West Trenton Avenue.
Oh, I should preface this by saying, all comments are limited to three minutes, so please try to be brief.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Fredrick Robina. My wife, Nicole Robina. We're the owners of Yardly Restaurant Group. You may have noticed that we started the process of converting the Friendly's on Trenton Avenue to our distillery, which is located in Yardly. The purpose this evening for us to come in is simply to say hello, and also to let everybody know that we have purchased the property on Delmore Avenue, which we plan to develop as, as well. So we wanted to just come in, say hello. If you're not aware of the Yardly Restaurant Group, we hold Lala Lobster, Yardly Distillery, Millie Yardly Diner, Sauce Yardly, which are restaurants all based out of Yardly, and then we have restaurants in Cape May, in Doylestown, and Princeton as well. We're extremely excited to be here in Morrisville. We live right across the street from the Friendly's, so technically, we're LMT, but, you know, we shop and live and work around right here in Morrisville. So we're very, very excited to be here.
Welcome. We're very excited to have you. And when you say the property on Delmore, do you mean the old Waterworks?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So that's the...
You're purchasing from the, the Morrisville Economic Development Corporation?
Correct.
Great.
And did that close? Because I heard rumors that it fell through.
No, our closing is in two weeks, and so prior to the close, we felt that we would just want to come in and say hello, and then if there was, you know, any questions now would be the time as opposed to after the close.
Can, can you share with the residents what you're going to put there, or is it still confidential?
No, 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 it's not confidential. So it's, it's a phased project. It's a large property. It's, it's an anchor. The deck is beautiful, as, as everybody knows. I know it's, it's kind of been abandoned for a little while. Because it's a large property, we would like to start with a beautiful river deck. So...
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So luckily, we have a distillery, and we have liquor licenses, so we can apply a liquor license to that location. We would like to name it Calpuns.
Oh.
I'll be named after the street and the bridge there. So some breaks. I feel like I'm talking more than you.
Oh, that's great to hear. We're very pleased with that.
Thank you.
At least I'm very pleased with that. Can't speak for everyone.
Yeah, we just really wanted to just come in and say hello and introduce ourselves.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
If you need any help with anything, feel free to contact our borough manager Judith or myself. I'll be happy to help with anything that you've run into problems with.
Thank you. Thank you. We have been in contact, and you've been very gracious, and we definitely appreciate that. Aside from that, we also work with Mike Catalio in Yardly, and he's, he's phenomenal. He really is. Yeah, Barry Islett does a great job. So you guys make a great...
I never came here, really.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
No, just welcome.
Thank you so much. We're so excited.
You already know my excitement, so thank you very much for coming.
I do have one more. Do you have an estimated, I'm not holding you to it, but an estimated time as to when everything will start opening?
Sure, it is. No, you know, there's, there's a little bit of diligence that has to go into that, and, you know, working closely already with Mike Catalio on that property, and then vaguely part of the video is part of that as well. So we're kind of getting, as soon as this is ready, we would love to come in and give a presentation for you.
Okay.
Please do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome again.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Debbie Colgan.
Hi, good evening. Debbie Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. I hope everyone is noticing, as volunteers and public works are sprucing up Williamson Park, it is evident that our community cares about the park and considers it an important part of our town. So this prompts me to remind council, sorry for the repetitions, but in the Bucks County redevelopment authorities 2021 existing conditions report supposed conditions of light were declared in park properties. This allowed the Williamson Park parcels to be included in the certified redevelopment area, putting the properties at risk of taking by eminent domain for the commercial development. Make no mistake, there is no other plausible reason for the park parcels to be included in the redevelopment area. Williamson Park is not lighted, and it is, there is no benefit for the park to be included. So I urge you again, remove the park properties from the certified redevelopment area and pass a resolution that declares and dedicates the entirety of Williamson Park as a permanent protected public parkland, as was intended 84 years ago. It is your job and your duty as holder of this land to safeguard the public trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie, and thank you for your efforts to preserve the beauty of Williamson Park. Ben Bresler?
Hello, council. My whole thing tonight is as exciting as a nice river deck in Morrisville, but I just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Ben Bresler, and I just recently took over as the president of Morrisville Little League, and I just wanted to let council know and all the residents know that I plan on doing my best to have a great relationship with the borough moving forward, and that's basically just what I'm here for, is to introduce myself to all of you that I just took over as president down there and look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
And I would just like to say that it's been a breath of fresh air to work with you. And in my report this evening, I talk about, I'm going to talk about the dugouts, how there's going to be a donation, and the Morrisville Little League will be, they will be redoing the roofs on some of the dugouts, and I just wanted to actually have you talk about that instead of me, because I would like to say thank you on behalf of Morrisville Borough. And I think you can, would you mind?
Sure.
Thank you.
We're fortunate enough to have one of our family members that's part of the league. He's part owner of a roofing company, and Riddick Roofing, and he is with, he talked to Owen Corning, who is the producer of Roof Shingles, and they were nice enough to donate all the material for the roofs for the Little League, and Riddick Roofing has donated all of their labor to fix the dugout roofs. There was people that were standing on them, walking on them, broke through plywood, pretty much destroyed the roof, so water was pouring in, and everything was kind of rotted out. So he's nice enough to fix the two, the two roofs on the Majors dugout and the two roofs on the softball field dugout. And last week during the heavy torrential rain, we did find that we have a leak in our Majors roof, the main building. So we're going to check that out, and if we do do that, we're going to obviously, you know, have to put that in as a separate permit. But for right now, we're just going to check it out and make sure that it, that if it's just a little patch or a repair, we have to do the whole thing. So hopefully, it is just a little patch, and we don't have to do that roof as well.
Mr. Paul? Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. And Mr. Bresler, I just want to thank you again, too, for following through with all the permitting paperwork and so forth. We have some items on the agenda this evening to relieve the fees and so forth. So again, thank you, thank you very much for all of your efforts.
And also, as I don't know if anybody does know, but we do have our, our opening day on April 1st. The parade will go through town at 10:00, and then we'll have our opening ceremonies immediately follow. And we do welcome anyone that is on Borough Council. We'd love to have everybody there. Hopefully, we have a nice turnout, and we're going to try and make it a nice family day down at the park.
What time is that?
The parade starts at 10:00 a.m., and that, it's, will lead us, we normally get to Williamson Park about 10:30-ish, and then immediately following, we'll have a nice little opening day ceremony with everybody. So I would say probably about 10:45, I'll be opening ceremonies.
Great.
Yeah. It'll be a nice family day. We have a lot of stuff for, for kids to do, and hopefully, we'll get a lot of families to stick around for the day.
Okay. I wanted also to thank you, because I've been working with you to promote our local businesses. So I appreciate all the efforts that, that LMT is going to do in order to do that. Yeah, that's fantastic.
I appreciate everybody's help over there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sherlock, you want to say something?
I was just going to ask him if he wanted to talk about the parade, but he just did. Thanks.
Thank you, Coach Bresler, and I just wanted to tell you that I think that Marzil is very lucky to have such a successful and popular Little League program, and we take great pride in it, and thank you for coming. We look forward to working with you throughout the season.
Mr. Paul, I would like to add, though, they, they were down last Saturday to clean the park, spent the entire day down there. So thank you to all those coaches.
We appreciate all that you do. Thank you. Next item of business is approval of minutes from our last Borough Council regular meeting on February 21st, 2023. Any discussion?
We used to have a much more brief meeting minutes. I know, Bob, Paul, that you took over and gave an example, and for a while, they were short and brief and kind of summarized. Why did they go back to being verbatim?
I did, I did the meeting minutes once, just to show the, the way that I prefer minutes, but it didn't seem to catch on. It's, I'm not in the business of doing minutes anymore, I'm afraid.
Yeah, I know. I just was wondering why it became verbatim.
I'll have to review them again and with staff and discuss how we would like to do, to take care of them. Thank you.
We have a pending motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any, any further discussion?
Mr. Paul, on page two, I had contacted the Borough Hall today. If you look down at, just after the third paragraph, it starts, "Mr. Holbert stated," and then there was nothing. That was apparently just a leftover from a former. So they'd be approved without that, those words. There's three words.
Okay, so are we amending the motion to approve them as revised? Okay, anyway, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Thank you. Okay, moving on to finance, our treasurer's report. Borough manager, can you give us a treasurer's report?
I guess. That's in everyone's packet.
Oh, okay. Any questions on the treasurer's report?
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, I'm going to ask Ms. Danko if we can have, and the chairman of the Finance Committee, if we could possibly have another meeting to discuss the actual, the financial. I guess my first question is, can we expect to get the 2023 final financial soon? Is that in the works? I mean, normally, we have it middle of February, like the final year, 2022, final year's financial.
It said 2023, so I wasn't sure.
Sorry, I probably did.
That's okay.
Yeah, I did say. Do you know if they're working on that? I mean...
Well, when you talk about the final 2022 financial, we had provided that in the packet as, as of the date of the, of the final, of that final date. So we've, we've already gone into 2023. We can go back and provide it again, December 31st, 2022?
Well, that's not the one I'm looking for. Normally, around six weeks to eight weeks after into the new year, there's a, a financial that, that is different. It's a year-end financial that gives you, because you'll be getting in, you'll be getting in monies from '22 for '22's expenses. I, I mean, we didn't get one last year or this year. I was just wondering, now that we have some new people, if we were getting one. So...
Yeah, it's not something that we've been, you know, we've been working on.
Okay.
But we can certainly look into it.
And then I, I do, I do have one question, I have a couple of questions about the financial, that's why I, I don't want to take up tonight's time, but I'd love to sit down and, and discuss it. The first line that says prior year revenue, where are those figures coming from? Because they're not really the prior years. So, um, that's, that's the main confusion. And then I have a question about whether, um, I think that we're conflating the figures between recycling and, um, and, and trash, if you look at last year's, um, and, and this year's, and the sanitation, it just, uh, they don't, I just, they just don't seem right.
We had spoke about this at several of the budget meetings last year. Do you, do you remember that, Nancy? Uh, that, that yes, there is a, a transparent, transparent difference because of the fact that there were some funds that were not collected in the past, and that they were put in the different line item because of that. Uh, so we did discuss that last year, uh, during the budget meetings, and we're going to, uh, moving forward, we're going to work through that, that the chart of accounts in those areas is still continuing to be worked on. But we know that those two line items are, are accurate in, in final amounts, we just have to work on the tweaking as to which account, uh, between the two of them, that it, it actually belongs in, and, and that's something that we've been working on.
Okay, and then, um, the uncollectibles, it showed that we were $228,000 short last year, at the end of the year, for uncollectibles. And, uh, but yeah, we've only budgeted $30,000 for uncollectibles this year, so I'm just going to suggest that maybe we can discuss this at another time, please.
Certainly. We can, we can discuss it at a finance meeting. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. May I have a call for a motion to approve the bill list?
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you, the ayes have it. Moving on to reports. The mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Um, welcome, Mr. Bresler. Uh, it's, uh, it's good to have you here. I, I hear everybody saying a lot of good things. I haven't had to spend a whole lot of time with you, but as I said earlier, I'll be talking to you tomorrow. Um, so it's just good to hear, um, how well everyone seems to be perceiving this relationship. It's been, as I'm sure you know, difficult in the past few years, but, um, but we all look forward to a great year, and we know how many great things and, and amazing things you do for the kids down there at that park. I live across the street, I see it every day, and I think a lot of us here realize it, so just thank you in advance for everything that you do, and I'll, and I will be at your parade. We've got Easter coming up, we got a longstanding tradition here, our Rotary Club, the Yardley Marsville Rotary Club does an egg hunt, they do a fabulous job, I'm proud to say I've been part of it in the past, uh, so that will be coming up. It's usually a pretty large event, so get there a little early, but, uh, they, like I said, they do a good job, they keep it organized, and it ought to be a lot, a lot of fun, and some good pictures available for you and the family. I'm going to talk about something I talk about every single month up here, uh, and that's our, our manpower and our police force. Um, I thank, um, council and manager and our, and Chief McClay, we've worked very hard over the last year to continue, uh, to fill holes if they, as they've opened, and, and they have. We've had some tragedies last year, we've had some, some unfortunate things happen, we've had some people that just went on to, uh, you know, to different positions they felt were better for them, uh, and at the end of the day, while we have made progress, and I'm very proud to say we were able to promote two part-timers to full-timers, promoting from within is always an amazing thing, because you already know how these people are, and I thank council for being supportive of that. Uh, but I do want to make it on everyone's radar that, um, uh, Chief McClay and I are going to sit down and hopefully, um, Ms. Ms. Danko can be involved in some of those conversations in coming up with a, a, a much more serious, long-term plan to make this a full-time police force. Um, it's something that is, it, it's much more sustainable these days with the, the police businesses a lot like others, they've seen a mass exit. In fact, we have, I think, and Chief will correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, I believe we have five part-timers with one of them fully available, and that's because these people have other full-time jobs and are looking for full-time jobs. It's a, it's, it's a different industry than it was five years ago. So we want to come up with a, you know, a serious, long-term plan as opposed to me sitting up here every month and, and just trying to say, hey, we could use another guy or two, uh, and that way, maybe that's something we can all get on the same page and agree about. I, we talk about all these amazing, amazing things we want to see happen, uh, here in Marsville, and we have to protect it first. So, um, and this is going to be a great year. I can see we have a lot of stuff scheduled already, and, uh, it's, I'm, I'm really excited for the summer. It's, you know, we had a, a bunch of events last year, and it's picking up a little more this year, so, you know, those are the progressive things we want to see. Thank you for the people here, as always, to speak on behalf of the park. Um, I, I do agree that we should, or somebody should reassess those, um, those areas that were considered blighted, uh, and hopefully our new business owners, I don't think they're here anymore, but hopefully, you know, I'm sure that'll be a big improvement there, too. So, well, good luck to them and, and welcome, and congratulations. And let's see, um, and Ms. Danko, I don't know if, if you have it, you don't have to answer us now, just, and if you were going to talk in your report, just a quick, um, update, I think we last talked about it a couple of months ago, on how, um, any current reports of the EIT coming in, and, uh, and I know, um, we talk a lot about the ARPA money, I just want to update the public. I know you're working on things here in the building and other stuff like that, so if you could just give the public an update on those things, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly.
And then, I, the only other thing I have is, um, is, uh, Councilwoman Hoball, uh, last month you had mentioned, um, the possibility of a donation toward the Police Department and a sponsor for that, and I was just wondering if you had any progress. You had mentioned we might see that this month.
Uh, well, it's not a donation to the Police Department, it is for a full-time truck enforcement officer, and apparently the, they, um, Ms. Danko has all the details, but I think that they did not, were not able to cut the check this month, so they will be here next month.
Fabulous. Thank you for the update. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thanks for everybody for coming, everybody who spends your time at home, I really appreciate it, and, uh, and I want everybody to realize that, uh, it really makes a difference. So we see too much on social media, that's, that's more problem than it is solution, and I always try to let people know that the, the words that you, you bring to us do a lot more than you probably think. And also, real quick, uh, let me welcome, we got our local Girl Scouts back here in the corner, they want to come, they want to come see how we do it, so let's make them proud, everybody. All right, thanks again, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Police chief's report, Chief McClay.
All right, I need to go off program a little bit. Um, I have a, an award to present to one of our officers from a situation that just happened Saturday night and Sunday morning. I know Judy, you don't know about it, but it only takes me 30 seconds. Mayor, could you come down here for a second, please? Officer Lewis, come on, please. So everybody can see you. This is a merit commendation in recognition of your aggressive investigative patrol skills, you were hereby commended for your actions while investigating a home burglary on March 18th, 2023. On this day, you responded to a burglary not in progress at 74 Harrison Avenue, while on location at the crime scene, you retrieved several videos from the victim's camera, as well as other videos in the area. In the videos, you could observe three males leave the house carrying packages going towards Coleman Avenue. At 1:42 AM, while on patrol in the area of South Pennsylvania Route 1, you observed three young males that fit the same description you observed during your burglary investigation. You conducted a pit stop, pits on all three males and engaged them. One male fled and was later apprehended a short distance away by Corporal Smith, while you and Officer August detained the other two juvenile males. The three males were transported to headquarters, and all three males received their, or random warnings and admitted to their roles in the burglary. All the items were returned to the police by the parents the next day. All three juveniles have been charged with burglary, theft, and related charges. Your investigative skills and your patrol skills, along with good teamwork, reflect credit upon you and the entire Police Department. The citation of this commendation will be, will become a permanent part of your official record. Thank you.
Congratulations, Officer House.
Thank you.
So that was a last-minute job on Saturday night and Sunday morning, and I just wanted to present that rather than wait another month for it.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, my stuff. We're working with Judith to come up with a new 457 program for all the employees in the borough, both the police and non-uniform. I invited the water department to join in if they wanted to. Our current 457 program, um, is sold with a, a new company and their customer service, and their rates are very, very low. Um, so we're looking to bring another, um, 457 program in, which is basically, for people that don't know what that is, it's a, it's basically a 403B, um, and the officers need that as part of their retirement. Um, there will be a slight cost to the borough, so I think by next month, we'll be able to present something about that. Um, but for now, it's, um, we're in the meeting stages with Engelberg Financial Services. Let's see. Um, next month, um, I'm going to bring Gara Zabon, one of my officers, he's going to present a five-year plan on, um, obtaining new tasers. Our tasers that we have now are starting to, um, reach the end of their life, um, and it's a very important thing that we have tasers that are up to date, so they work every time, and we don't have to escalate force into something worse. So I'm going to bring him to show you a five-year plan, um, next month. Testing, they had the consortium test this past weekend, very bad numbers, very bad numbers. 211 signed up, 122 showed up, 102 passed the physical. We don't know how many people passed the written yet, so I can guarantee it'll be below 100. That's the 39 departments in County of Bucks County. We have to look forward to a plan, and everybody always says, uh, Chief Hoyt wants a plan. Policing in America right now is at a critical stage, um, and our officers are very low in the salary range compared to other departments. Ben Salem just put theirs out, they're starting officers at, I think, 82 or $83,000. Money counts when it comes to this. We're going to have to look at this for a, for a future plan, if you want to be able to track officers and retain them. So that'll be something the mayor spoke about tonight that we need to look at, um, if you want to have a department that you have now or a larger department. And next month, I'm also going to come back with you, we talked about a part-time pay increase, part-time benefits for the part-time guys, um, but we had talked, we stopped talking about it because we were in negotiations. Negotiations are over, so I'm going to come back to the council next month with some kind of plan to treat our part-time officers a little bit better, so I can retain as many as possible. So, that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, Alan, I know you got a question.
I do, actually.
I, I was wondering, I haven't seen your police report in our packets for a while. Are, are you still doing them?
Are you talking about my numbers?
Yeah.
They were sent weeks ago, they're, they're sitting right here.
I, I believe you, it's just, from you to whomever they go to, I, they haven't been in our delivery. I know, well, I am. I am, I still, don't go away, though, I still have you.
Okay.
Who's sending those, Josh?
Excuse me?
Who's sending them, because I haven't been receiving?
They go to the mayor, the mayor's house.
Yeah, I know they were in last, I know they were, I remember seeing them in last month's packet, and I do forward them, so, um, yeah, I don't know. Uh, if there's ever an issue, we can get it to you immediately, but I, I forward them the day he, he sends them to me, which, which you, you said was already a couple, couple weeks ago, right? Yeah. And I, that's why I even called you last month, I, just to make sure you had everything that you needed, so...
Everything you've sent me, I've printed out.
Sure.
And it's in the packet, so...
Okay.
I must have gotten that.
All right, well, at least it's here if anybody needs it. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. The other thing is, um, I started thinking about the 30-hour rule that we have in place, or 60 hours in two weeks, and I started doing a little bit of research about it, and that basically is because of the Affordable Care Act, and, um, we would have to offer part-time officers healthcare if they surpassed a certain number of hours, because they wouldn't be considered part-time, they're considered full-time. But I started doing research, and, um, I called Brian Fitzpatrick's office and, and asked them, like, do they have any clarification on that rule? And so then he told me that I can contact the Congressional Research Service, and they would, they would research this for me. So there's three things that I asked about. One is if we have, because basically our part-timers are not like office staff where they work 30 hours every week, sometimes they might work zero, sometimes they work 60. So they're going to look into all this for me to tell me whether we can increase that or not, so, um...
So can I introduce you to your council?
I know, but this is free, and our council is not.
Because we have gone through that, we went through that argument a couple, three years ago about that, and I...
Yes, I recall.
And we did, and they, they spoke, and that's where the 60 hours came from.
I know, but if we, if we get, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but if we get the Congress to tell us differently, and no offense, Scott, um, but, but I, I'd rather do it for free to see what they say first. They might come back and say the same thing, so I don't want to wait...
Did you remember that we went through the lawyers?
I do.
In my, excuse me, but, um, I was not aware of any of this. Um, I, it's, it'll be nice if you get some kind of advisory opinion from Congress, but we will still run it through either our borough solicitors at, at Flager, or, um, our other solicitors at the Seattle Law Firm.
Yeah, I, I didn't say we weren't going to, I was doing this as a first step of research. So, so the other thing I asked, like, um, that I'm going to ask them is about hardship, like, so we have two officers that are out on injury, like, if they're, they're filling in as hardship, do we have to abide by that rule? And the third thing, because I did look also, they said that if you have less than 50 employees, that you don't have the Affordable Care Act. So I don't know where we stand on all of this, but I'm going to, to send a letter to the Congressional Research Service and see what they come back to me with. Just, I'm just trying.
I, I agree that, that was my biggest fight that I had with our lawyers, was that, that we're a municipality, we're a business under 50, and we do not have to abide by that. I agree 100% with you, but the lawyers overruled me on that one, and we, you know...
I get it. So when we get it, then we'll have a discussion with our attorney, but I don't want to start, I don't want to bill the borough for something that we can get elsewhere.
It's really not hard, you can research it yourself, and you can see, you've already done the research that they're going to tell you.
I know, but this is for government, like, this is more, like, the Affordable Care Act is more of a general, and it's, I think it, it doesn't really abide by, like, government rules in, like, a small borough like this, so I, I need some answers to some things. So I'm going to look into it to see where we stand with it, because if...
Please forward everything to me, I'd like to know.
I will. Because, because if we can increase that, um, that, I think that would help. And the, one of the other things that I was thinking about, because we do have to figure out how to get more part-timers in, it's not necessarily a full-time problem, it's, it's replacing them when, when they're out on vacation or sick or hurt. So, um, one of the other things is, I know we have that 30-hour rule, but if there was a way to pay them overtime instead, you know, if, if we keep the 30-hour rule, or, you know, whatever rule, I, I haven't really thought all of this through yet, but, but if there was a way to give them overtime.
There is, if they work with the federal law, anything over 80 hours, they get.
Right, but they're not allowed to do that. Right.
Slightly, except on occasion, that we have an emergency that we do. But I agree with the 60-hour rule, I did not agree with the rulings from our, our both sets of attorneys, and they were, that time, that's when we had an officer that was working 90, 100 hours, and they were afraid there was going to be a lawsuit saying that he wants, um, full-time benefits based on that, if you remember a couple of years ago, and that lawsuit never occurred.
Correct. But we, but there has to be, I think, some, some stipulations put in place, and I, council can discuss this, this is just my idea, but, you know, that, that it can't go to, like, overtime can't just go to one officer. I get it if the others turn it down, but as a first choice, I think it has to be kind of even, because with, with that other officer, he, he, I think, was the first choice all the time, but...
No, it's, it's, like the mayor said, we only have so many officers that are available. No, it's kind of like the mayor said, we only have so many officers that are available. Most of our guys are all working other jobs, they all are, except for one.
Right.
And he's the only one that's available to work more hours than, as you suggest. So the rest of them, it's not even in their wheelhouse, because they just, they have their other job.
Yeah, we just have to ensure that, you know, we're not doing something to make it seem like they're full-time when they're really part-time, so, I mean, that'll be a bigger discussion if we can overturn this, but if not, then.
If you can overturn that, one officer that can't work more doesn't need benefits.
Right.
So, but I don't think that matters, because they say as soon as you hit that sixty hours, it's a whole different animal.
Yeah, I was also reading someplace where it's not just, like, thirty hours a week, it's actually like a hundred and thirty hours per month, which is a lot different, which is why I want some answers before I engage legal.
You're right, that is in there, but that's where we settle back to sixty hours.
Right.
Every pay period, this is a compromise.
Yeah, trying to figure out how to help you.
I only practiced law for forty-two years, and I will stand behind the advice that we've gotten from our regular law firms, and I'm certainly willing to look at any potential improvement to that or revisions to that, but, you know, we can discuss this as a council, I think, some other time, other than through the police, the police chief's report. I wasn't prepared for this, but we'll look into it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I just wanted to say real quick, this is, I agree, these are a lot of the things that Chief and I have been talking about for a long time, and all of us, but I would appreciate it, because we talk about something different every month with certain ideas, if Chief and I could be brought in the loop to these things, instead of later saying, it's going to happen, it might happen, it could happen, we would like to be in that conversation. I just heard.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we excluded you from anything.
No, 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 you're misunderstanding, you're misunderstanding, like, it has nothing to do with you, first of all. What I'm saying is, the conversation she's having with Congress, we don't know anything about that, Chief obviously has good information he can.
That's not, that's, that's, she's acting as an individual, not in her capacity.
Okay, first of all, I wasn't speaking to you, and second of all, I was asking if we could be brought in the loop as the people who run the day-to-day operations of the police department, thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Chief. Borough manager's report.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for coming, and Girl Scouts, thank you for coming, it's very nice to see you here. I hope you enjoyed part of the meeting that you were able to view, and I hope you see how some of the things are done here on local government purviews. It's very nice of you to come, have a great night. One of the capital projects that we're working on with Loftus, the construction company, of course, is the Bridge Street project that we talk about every month. Pendot has reviewed the design at this time, we are now awaiting DCNR to finalize the money portion of the new grant that we have gotten to supplement that. We did talk about, we do have the extension for the Williamson Park Planning Grant, so we're excited. That should be beginning very shortly, I'm working with Gilmore and Associates, and I will certainly be apprising council and everyone as to the progress with that, because the public will be very involved with that. What we're going to be doing is having a meeting, a public hearing meeting here at Borough Hall upstairs, and there's a series of things that we'll be going through, so get ready and be excited and come with your ideas for Williamson Park. The other item, getting back to Bridge Street, we're waiting to acquire the rest, the newest grant funds for the engineering and so forth, and that's where we're at at this point. This evening, there's going to be railing choices for council to review and vote on. I do have to tell you this, we're not the only entity that will be voting on this, there's at least ten other stakeholders, the Historic Review Board is involved also, so if council does choose a certain particular railing, and the majority of the vote does not go that way, we will end up with whatever the majority vote is, so I want everybody not to be upset if it doesn't go the way that we vote. The other item that has been taking place is, excuse me, I lost my, my voice.
Can you do that?
Thank you, no, thank, thank you, the living on those. I had informed council Friday that we, we were awarded the grant application that we applied for, for a brand-new dump truck with a salt spreader and plow, totals about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, I'm so very proud to announce that. So the, the hard part is going to be to put an order in for this vehicle with, since COVID, it's been very hard to order new things, so we're hoping that we're able to get it before it snows. Some of the other items that I wanted to report on, I know there was an article regarding Falls Township and the warehouses that border Morrisville. The manager at Falls Township has informed me that no traffic will be allowed onto Post Road, that the entrance will be gated and used for emergency vehicles only. All vehicles and trucks will use the South Pennsylvania Drive. The information that was in the article was a misquote, so I just wanted to let everyone know that. Let me see, I've already reported on Mr. Bressler and the Morrisville Little League, again, greatly appreciated, so excited for the new roofs to take place. Some of the other items that are taking place right now, and I know the mayor had asked me to touch upon the ARPA updates, we have two of the items on our agenda for this evening. We've been working diligently with an architect for the roof here at Borough Hall, that's, that covers our emergency services, and unfortunately, when the architects were up on the roof, they had noticed that we have other issues that we have to deal with, so the roof project is turning into roof slash building project because of the fact that it's been let go so long. So I'm anticipating that that project will cost a little more than we anticipated originally, but that is one of the items we're spending the ARPA funds on, we did already have our Gasboy project that's completed with the ARPA funds. The other item that is on the council agenda for this evening is the sewer project, that is actually on the agenda, we put it out to bid, and we have a bid, and we're looking for the awarding of that this evening, once it's awarded, you'll see work to begin very shortly at the Borough Hall, we out on this side of the parking area, we're hoping not to disturb the parking area, we're hoping to go along the grass area, and we're excited to have several projects started and hopefully finish as soon as possible. The roof project, we'll be working on getting that out to bid, that's on the agenda for approval to advertise, once we receive bids and so forth, it'll be put back on the agenda for approval when we get a very nice bid, and we're hopeful that work will begin as soon as possible there. There are a lot of other issues that we have, like I said, we'd also like to incorporate some lighting and so forth, so we'll, we'll see where that, where that ends up, but I'm proud to announce those are some of the things we're working on. The other item that we're working on will be the electrical system downstairs, that's part of the ARPA funds, and the, the weight for that is because we're concerned about the roof. Again, we believe that the cost for that will be more than we had anticipated with our, our guesstimate, so there is a concern with that. We have a lot of other things that we're working towards there. As you asked, Mayor, the sixty-five thousand dollar check donation, the presentation will be in April, so I can hardly wait to have them appear and provide a sixty-five thousand dollar check. These are all such positive, positive items. The other item I'd like to report, I had a, a meeting with library staff, and there was a discussion because of the concern of the budgetary items, so there was a suggestion for some of the staff at the library to obtain some, some funding through donations. I'm so proud to announce that, and I'm actually going to say the employee's name, Sue Neff, she was able to acquire a two thousand dollar donation and a thousand dollar donation, which totals three thousand dollars for the summer program. I'm ecstatic and thanked her over and over and would like to thank her in the minutes, because I think the library's doing a phenomenal job, we discussed hours of open and closing and things like that, it's been very exciting to see such positivity take place, so I'm very proud to announce that also.
That's great news.
That's great that she did that.
Yes, I'm so proud of her, and I'm proud of all the library employees, they've been doing a phenomenal job, keeping with the schedule that we needed, to keep with the budget, all positive news, all positive news. I didn't want to leave anything else, so forgive me, I'm rummaging through my paperwork. I believe I'm finished with my report this evening, I'm just so happy to report such positivity within the borough, thank you.
Thank you. On to committee reports. Finance Committee, any report?
No report, except we have a meeting at work.
Okay, Parks and Recreation.
I don't know if you want to go first on yours, but.
I'll report. So for most of the meeting, our good portion of the meeting, we talked about adding out for certain events, for borough-sponsored events, alcohol in the park, and I brought several samples from various boroughs around the state to kind of show what they were offering and what their wording was, and we followed up with that, with Bob having a policy and ordinance meeting where we talked further, and I see that he's followed up with sending stuff to Scott, so I'll let him kind of report more on that.
Okay, in fact, we had our first policy and ordinances committee meeting in at least three years, at least as long as I've been on council, and it was primarily to, to discuss the issue of how do we, what do we need to do if we wanted to consider introducing alcohol to some of our special events in town? As Catherine pointed out, we, she, she and Nancy Sherlock had shared samples that they had gotten of both ordinances as well as application forms from various boroughs around the state, specifically Chambersburg, Carlisle, Fleetwood, Middletown, I think there might have been one or two others, but that's, that was primarily it, and they, they ranged from being relatively short ordinances, or amendments to their ordinances, to more comprehensive ones. The, the one for Chambersburg was, was the most comprehensive, and I, and at the end of the meeting, I said I would take that and work to prepare some sort of markup that the committee could consider at a future meeting, and I have, I have shared that with Scott Holbert, our borough solicitor, because I realize in, in our discussions about the issues that are inherent in considering whether to adopt a, an alcohol permit ordinance, that we need to identify what the issues are, where our legal risks are, where our economic risks are, and make sure that we, we're going to do, that we do it right, and that whatever comes out of the Policy and Ordinance Committee in the form of a draft that should be submitted to this council for final approval, it should be in as, as perfect a form as possible, and I want to make sure that, notwithstanding the fact that I practice law, I did not practice in this area, and I want, I want the benefit of Mr. Holbert. My Vice President, Vice President Lawell had mentioned to me yesterday that, that it was her understanding that when we approved the resolution last month to explore the possibility of serving alcohol at public events, that that was, that was, that exploration would be at no cost. I didn't, I don't find that in the minutes, my understanding is when you explore it, you need to consider the legal niceties, for a lot of the reasons that you just heard about the thirty-hour work week for the, for the police, and so I've, I brought Mr. Holbert in sooner rather than later to help me sift through these various ordinances, as well as the, the forms of the application permits, to identify the things that, that first the Policy and Ordinance Committee at its next meeting on, on April twelfth will consider, and then we can serve up at least a, what I consider to be an acceptable working draft for, for full council to consider. One of the, one of the issues that, that, that came up in our discussions is the idea of sponsorship, and the borough, the borough manager had suggested that any of the special events that we propose to serve alcohol should be sponsored, or at least cosponsored by the borough, to ensure that we have control over the situation. I've asked Mr. Holbert to, to give us a little bit of advice, a little overview of what borough sponsorship means, because I also noticed that with respect to, as we, as we seem to have more and more special events popping up on our, on our agenda, thanks to the work of the Parks and Rec Committee, that we seem to have more and more of these, a higher incidence of them to be sponsored by the borough, and I'm not, and I, for one, I'm not sure all that that entails, as far as what the potential cost liabilities and expenses are, and I, and I'm also concerned that we can at least track whatever expenses are incurred in that respect, because I don't think we have it as any kind of a special line item in our financial statements, so we just need to be cognizant of the fact that as we take on these, more events with more possibilities, that we also, it also carries with it risk, and so that when we vote on whether to hold these things and go forward, that we do it fully informed and, you know, fully knowledgeable of what the implications are. Mr. Holbert?
Yes, so the idea of the borough sponsoring or cosponsoring an event means you're, you're essentially one of the entities putting on the event, you're not acting just as the, you know, let's say it's in the park, you're not just acting as the owner of the park and the regulator of the vent, event, you're also acting as the proprietor, in the sense that this is your event, you're taking responsibility for it. What that's generally meant here, as well as my other municipalities that I've represented, where the municipality is the sponsor of the event, is things like permit fees, I mean, they get waived for the event, or in the case where you're the borough and you're sponsoring it, you're not paying yourself, it's, it's your event, so you're just going to put it on. So things that go that way, generally when you have other events and then you're cosponsoring it, or not, I should say not cosponsoring, excuse me, when you have an outside entity putting on an event, even the most conscientious person, there's going to be need help from borough staff, the police department, the administration and processing the application and some of the stuff that needs to be done, it's just a fact of life. This includes setup and cleanup for the events, all those things happen, and just like we have escrow accounts and land development, because our office, the borough engineer, Mr. Italia's operation, shouldn't be using the borough's money and the borough's dime to review projects for a third-party entity, same thing here, borough staff, the police department, who are being extra staff for these events, that's what those permit fees cover. So that's one of the things that theoretically, if you're sponsoring an event, you could be missing out on. The other thing is a separate insurance policy, and I can differentiate between non-alcohol and alcohol events, in a general event, you just get the, the other entities, you know, general insurance policy, general liability, you get named as an additional insured that allows you for indemnification for yourself and subrogation potentially for your own insurance, if there is a lawsuit, because it's, it's events on borough property. With alcohol-related events, we used to have these in Allentown regularly, one thing they would do is, I shouldn't say events regularly, they would do a specific annual event, booze, brews, and barbecues, right around the Fourth of July, they would have to get for that event a special, I guess, rider will call it, almost like a single-day alcohol, general and liability, liquor license liability insurance, it's a special type of thing they've had to get, I don't know if that was, I wasn't involved in that, I just know they got it, so it could be tied to the size of the event and what they were doing, the fact that they were shutting down the entire, we'll say, main block of the city for two days, that's something they had to do, so those are things you would be looking at. Now, there could be benefits to being a sponsor of an event as well, in the sense that you have a little bit more control and decision-making involved with the event, because for the most part, you know, we are a government and acting as a regulator, you are, have, bound by certain restrictions and allowing most events to take place, but as the proprietor, as the cosponsor, you get a little more say in the restrictions on the event, how the event's going to be run, so there are benefits to being a sponsor, but these are things that balance and need to be weighed with the borough staff amongst yourselves as a policy decision about how you're going to approach this, because it comes to the point where, when you do sponsor a good amount of events, and then you look to not sponsor an event, is where you can run into trouble, in the sense that, why is this event all of a sudden not being selected, and things like that? So there are benefits to sponsoring an event, there are benefits sometimes to not sponsoring the event, it's a matter of policy, though, for how the borough wants to proceed and how it wants to best serve its residents.
Scott, we, we had, we did discuss your fee at the last meeting on this, you know, we asked you, so I want to clarify that, we, as sponsoring an event, we have always still charged vendor fees and asked for insurance riders, so, just to clarify that we, the borough still gets money.
And I believe we're, we're working on. And I believe we're working on that as a cosponsor, we're cosponsoring.
Yes, but even the different, like last year, the Truck Festival and stuff, we still made money off all the fees.
Right.
We sponsored it.
Right, but what I'm saying is we're cosponsoring that, so we always, we always make the trucks go through the food truck fee, because we have separate fees for those, so we have to continue to follow through.
Yes.
Now, certain things we, we would not, if we were sponsoring an event, it'd be different. But when we're cosponsoring, we normally do require fees.
Right. But I, yes, and that's part of, excuse me, so that's part of what I came to, to the policy and procedure meeting also, was to talk about so we can clear up some of those policies, so that we're clear in our communication on what we're doing, because I think it is a little vague, and I brought that up to both Bob and to Judith concerning those issues.
Yes, and I wanted to say that it did get a little convoluted, because some of the items, we, Earth Day, we decided to, council decided to follow through with that in lieu of them planting a tree, alleviate the fees, or waive the fee. So we've taken several different paths.
Yeah.
Some of these issues are relevant only with respect to the alcohol events, but many of them really relate to all of our events, not just whether they're the, they're ones that are designated for the alcohol consumption, such as what the sponsorship means, what the permit fee covers, whether we waive it or not, how much, how far in advance are you required to have all of your documentation in before you can be put on the agenda for approval by council? That makes sure that everything is already fully submitted before it's, before it's teed up for a council resolution, for example. Things such as if you have, if you have a vendor or a sponsor who did not comply the last time they, they tried to stage an event in your borough, do you, you know, do you ban them for one, two, three years? Do you let them in at your discretion? Things such as, do you, for the events, do you have designated areas, rough areas where the people who are drinking can, have to stay within? Do we need our police or other volunteers to make sure that people abide by those restrictions? Anyway, I think that by going through the examples, it's very helpful to be able to identify the issues, as I say, so that the committee can kind of reach a consensus on what we think is the most reasonable approach, or, and what best promotes Morrisville's interests without exposing it to undue liability, and then serve it up to this council, hopefully, at the next, the next public meeting or the one after that. But, but in any case, that's, that's how we're tackling it, and we certainly are interested in any input from members of the public, as well as any people who are involved in the planning of these events, as to things that we should consider in making these calculations, because this is really more of an art than a science, and, you know, experiences, anyone who has experience with this will certainly be able to help us work our way through it. But it's, it's complicated, it's doable, but we just want to make sure that we do it right.
Exactly. Can I, can I go on with my, finish my report?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I wanted you to speak, no.
Yeah, if you want to go back to Parks and Recreation, sure.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Bob, for, and Scott, for working so hard on this. I know it wasn't easy, because I know how hard I worked in getting all the information, so I appreciate what you've done. So going on, we did, and in that meeting, we talked a lot about examples of how other boroughs and stuff charge for police and how they work and all that stuff. So much was covered in these past two meetings. I do want to talk about something that was brought up at the meeting, was the damage to our preserve. And I just think we, and I know Judith agrees, I think we need to give a shout out to Debbie Colgan. I know that she worked hard with Debbie, too. But if any of you know that preserve, it was decimated. I mean, it was hard the first time I saw it. So, thank you. Why don't you stand up and kind of tell what has happened and transpired?
Well, it was really exciting that we actually got a response from Conrell. We got a response from Conrell, from the actual CEO and president, and he got a team down here within two days, and they came down, they met with us, they looked at all the, the area, now they still say they didn't do it, okay, so.
Yes, they want to blame it on Pico, and I said, well, Pico wants to blame it on you, so.
We just, you know, we're passing out, how do we go forward? So what they did is, is we talked about, number one, delineating where their right-of-way is, and I noticed today that they had put up a very nice split-rail fence.
That she asked for.
Really good, it was very nice, so that'll be their side and it'll be our side, so that's going to be really good. And then the other really great thing, they haven't done this yet, but this was, they did follow through on this, so I got to give them a lot of credit. They're going to go along that whole rail line and get rid of all their old ties that they've been putting there for years.
Concrete, gravel.
And junk, all their junk. And they promised also that they would even go along the riverfront and take a look at the junk piles that they leave along. Now, they wouldn't go so far as to say they would fix up their riverfront, but we talked about how that riverfront, we don't want to be in an industrial area, we're not an industrial area there. And they really were responsive, so kudos that they responded, and thank you all for your interest and your support.
Yeah, well, thank you for your really hard work on this, because, and I know that you communicated with Judith and stuff, so.
Just goes to show being a nudge house.
But one of the things that we discussed is, because she knows the history of that area, is that the one guy was from, grew up in Trenton. And so we're talking about the spawning area of the sturgeon, and how, you know, how important that is, and I talked about by you leaving all that, those old robo-ties that leaks creosol into the ground, into the water, and he stepped back first, you know, he understood what we were talking about. And thank you, thank you for being on that. So that's, that's a huge win. It still is hard for me to look at the pictures of what we used to have. So, and we did talk, our budget is, you know, $5,000, and I don't have a problem with that. Some people have asked me, and I really do think we can work within that budget, I'm committed, and, you know, we've got some other things going on, so I really appreciate, you know, that we've got that. But last year, we spent very little. We had, all of our events had vendor fees that brought in revenue, and we'd made a policy that if you canceled, you didn't get the money back, so that all just stayed in there. And so we worked really hard to stay within a tight budget and to make these events happen. And we talked about the events calendar, and a lot of that's going to be brought up tonight to vote on. And the reason we're going ahead of time is because I don't want to start asking vendors and food trucks and activities to happen before we vote on it. So I did give them to Judith a little rushed, like at night, scanning to her, thank you for your patience, but to make that happen. So, anyway, that's what is going on, we haven't been important next meeting, too, so I hope more people in the community will come out and work with us. What's the date?
If I may say something, if Debbie is still in the room, I couldn't help but notice the correspondence, so I want to thank you, Debbie, for reaching out, that looked like a lot of legwork that you're doing with them. And with that said, you know, we have people in the borough that are reaching out to get anything done, and I think it's a positive, whether it's Debbie reaching out to Conrell, Bob reaching out to other boroughs, Helen reaching out to Congressman Fitzpatrick, Catherine reaching out to these other boroughs and the food trucks. You know, we, you know, we reach out to different places to get things done. I don't think any, anyone was, anyone has been selfish in any reaching out that we covered tonight. So, again, Debbie.
Thanks, Scott.
That appeared to be a very tedious email trail back and forth. Thank you again.
Yeah. And, you know, I want to shout out to Judith, who was very helpful and supported and did some letter writing and calling herself, so thank you.
Thank you.
And just a kind of a side note, we've been working with members of the community who are usually involved in events, and it's being sponsored by the Morrisville Economic Development Council, and, and there's different people, there's myself, there's Ben who comes for the Little League, you've come to talk about the, you know, some of the events that the mayor sponsors, there's just, there's Imagine Morrisville, there's churches, the Coalition, all coming. And we're coming together because we want to change the perception of Morrisville. We want to change what people think that we're about and let them know who we really are about. We want people to understand what a great community this is. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, I'm hoping with all the special events that we're doing, that, number one, that we're, you know, bringing people tourism in, into the, into the Morrisville, that they're wanting to come to the Jazz Festival, that they're wanting to come to the Food and Truck Festival, and the Oktoberfest, and, and things like that, that this is a positive thing to bring other people into our community, plus be a benefit to, you know, to our residents, and make this a fun. You know, so many people say, you know, last year when the Food Truck Festival, before it was canceled, said, we're so excited because we're going to be like everybody else that has this. You know, we're going to be like them, and that's, they were really happy about it and very disappointed that it was canceled. So it's kind of really great that we're all gathering, that people in this community are working together with a shared vision and a shared point of view, which doesn't always happen with a large or small group of people. So some very exciting things, working with a business, better business, you know, a Morrisville business, in supporting their car show, we're figuring out how ways that we can economically, but still promote our events, because putting banners is way out of the price line on that, but other ways that we can do, that we can all support each other. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, because as I was saying earlier, we had a lot of great events come up next year, I already see more. You know, it's, it's March 21st, and I can tell how you're ready for the year already, so it's exciting, and I just look forward to everything that you've got going. So thank you for all your hard work. As somebody who's been promoting events most of my life, I think most people don't realize how much work goes into it, so, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot of people in the community that help, yeah.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just add to this? You know, there's, there's been a lot of pushback last year and this year with regards to food trucks, and I want the public to know that food trucks, you do not need to be afraid of food trucks. And they're not harming our restaurants, we've had discussions with the restaurants, they're not set up with food trucks, so we're hoping that people will embrace them as, as they are part of the events. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committees?
I have something. So, just as a little bit of background, North Point had come to the borough and they had asked for a letter of support in something that they were doing, they were going to Google, and they were asking Google to take South Pennsylvania Avenue off as the designated route. So they had gotten some letters from neighboring communities, Falls Township, I think Lower Makefield, Judith wrote a letter, I also wrote a letter, and in my letter, it was rather long, and I was begging Google not to, you know, Google to take off South Pennsylvania Avenue. I had included a lot of resident comments that I had found on Facebook, I included pictures of the trucks going into the bridges, I had included a lot of the debris that is found on the homeowners' lawns, and, you know, I just had a lot of, I even had pictures of children that were crossing the street with the trucks behind them. So yesterday, I got good news from North Point, they were very successful, and South Pennsylvania Avenue is now off Google Maps. They are now next working to try to get it off, yeah, isn't that great? They're trying to get it off of the Apple Maps, and they're going to get it off of Waze, but they're working on it, but the first step was Google. So the good thing is that, and I did it for my house last night, when you go on Google Maps and you type in, it's going to be Keystone Industrial Park and any, any company that is within Keystone Industrial Park. So if you're sitting at home and you type in Keystone Industrial Park, it will not take you down South Pennsylvania Avenue. The bad part is the truckers that know the route, that's not going to, you know, change, and anybody going to waste management, that's not going to change. So I was going to contact North Point tomorrow and ask them if we can expand the region outside of Key, of their area, or ask Waste Management to actually replicate what North Point has done. I also had gone to Brian Fitzpatrick's office, and he too, they have a Google liaison, and so then he too was working on his side in order to make this happen. So it happened, and I'm very pleased, so if there's a trucker coming from, you know, Louisiana, he won't be coming down South Pennsylvania Avenue.
Super, Helen, that's a good job, thank you for putting that effort into it.
Yes, thanks.
Good news.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
It was my pleasure.
Okay, moving on to our action items.
Actually, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. So regarding Judith had mentioned the Falls Warehouse on...
Should this be in other business as opposed to?
No, this is in my committee report.
Okay, I'm sorry, what committee is this?
It's the committee I'm on, the Business Outreach.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Who was on that committee, then?
Just myself.
Well, that's inappropriate.
Ted created the committee, I don't, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, but committee is more than one person.
Ted created it, I don't know what to say. Ted put me on it, I don't know what to tell you, Nancy.
Go on.
I'll volunteer for it.
At any rate, yeah, you're welcome. So, so the warehouse that was going to open on Post Road in December, the Falls Planning Commission had declined the plan, and then in February, or just at the end of, beginning of March, the Falls Supervisors had approved the plan preliminarily. So I was going to write, ask council to write letters in order to ask the Falls Supervisors, because the plan, as Judith had mentioned, was going to have traffic and trucks coming out onto Post Road, which would have annihilated that back neighborhood there. So I was very happy to hear that it was a typo, and that those, those trucks will not be coming down Post Road, however, and then the trucks will be made to go left onto Tyburn Road as they exit, and they will not be coming through Morrisville, which is another good, good news. But I also called John Galloway's office, and he too called Falls Township, and so they, he made them very cognizant that when we share a back road like that, that they have to reach out to Morrisville Borough, and that they can't make plans that will impact Morrisville Borough without Morrisville Borough's input. So I just want everyone here to be cognizant of that, and if they hear anything, that we need to get together and make sure that decisions made include us. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Helen. Now, we can go with the action items. Item 8A, a call for a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding between Morrisville Borough and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AKA APS Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries, thank you. Item 8B, call for a motion to authorize the borough to participate in Bucks County Health Department Annual West Nile Virus Program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. Item 8C, call for a motion to approve, resolution approving amendments to the rules and regulations of the Morrisville Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Discussion.
Okay.
Yes, I have some things. So I want to, I see Barb Bauer in the audience, it was a great...
It was a great job that you guys did. I mean, it's very inclusive. It's, it's got all those state statues in there. Like, I can't commend you enough for, for how you've updated those rules. On a side note, it's 80 pages long, and we only just got it on Friday. And I found already two or three things that I, I would like corrected, one of which is the consortium puts on the test, and, and one of the items said that, and I, I don't have my notes in front of me, but the physical has to come before the, the written or vice versa. But they put on the consortium, and we can't have a rule that something that they control, we're going to contradict by saying, "No, this exam has to come first." So I, I would like to make a motion to table this for this month, so that council can have a little bit more time to really read this document, because it's, it's, it's long and, and really hard to read, because it's all legalese.
Okay, is there a second to the motion to table?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Opposed.
Okay.
Two?
We had, we had three, we had three public meetings for this on Monday, February 20th.
Scott, Scott, we, we-
We went over this thoroughly in the hall. We were in that room-
Excuse me, Mr. Robinson, we, we lost. Motion, the motion to table carries.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that it's, it's bad or anything. It's-
Discussion's over till, till the next meeting. Sorry.
I just want to let Barb know, you know, that it's not that it's bad.
Tabled the motion. Can we move on, please?
You understand.
Item 8D, call for a motion to approve Police Directive 241 Criminal Investigations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8E, call for a motion to approve a conditional offer of employment as a part-time police officer to Brian German Jr.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8F, call for a motion to approve the annual Winter Fest Parade sponsored by Hot Rides LLC of Morrisville, using the previously approved parade route on Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, at 10:00 a.m., rain date, Sunday, December 3rd, at 1:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. The motion carries. Item 8G, call for a motion to approve waiving fees of $75 for roof replacement permits for baseball dugouts to be replaced by Morrisville Little League.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Who, who was the second, Carlita or Andrew?
Carlita.
Yeah, it's well worth the $75 to see you guys fix up.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Yes?
I think it might be appropriate if we write a thank you note to both the single company, I wrote it down, and, and as well as the roofer, thanking them for their efforts. Do you think, don't you think that's appropriate?
I don't think we need to make a formal motion, a resolution for that.
Oh, no, I'm not asking for that. I'm just sort of a direction.
Sure. Again, thank you, Coach Bresler.
May I, Mr. Bresler, would you be able to help me with the information as to who I would have to address that to? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 8H, call for a motion to approve a food truck festival sponsored by Morrisville Borough to coincide with opening day of Morrisville Little League Baseball at Williamson Park, Saturday, April 1, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
The food trucks will be applying for permits as, as we did, and this will be one of these last seconds, and we don't know until the last day of March.
We haven't had any applications to date, but yes, if, if there are food trucks that are coming, they would have to come to the office and, and apply for a permit.
Yes.
So do we make this motion contingent upon completion of, of all required documentation, or do we defer it until next month? Oh, no, it's too much, too late, next month?
Too late, so you can do that.
Okay. Can we, do we need to rise the resolution, or is that, is that somehow implicit?
It's implicit.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion?
So I know, Ben, you and I had talked about having a couple of, of our local restaurants, like, set up tables. Is that happening or no?
If they would like to, I basically gave them an opportunity to. I told them if, if they did, that they would have to come down to the Borough and, 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 and permit.
Okay. So if, if any of our local restaurants, because they don't have food trucks, but if any of the local restaurants able to set up a little table, or can we waive the fee, or do they have to have a fee?
They would have to have the fee.
And what would that fee be?
Twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Is there, if-
Excuse me, you, you could waive the fee. It's not that you couldn't waive it, but if you waive it for this, you would have to consider, you see what I'm saying? I'm not sure how you would decipher how to, to maneuver something of that nature.
So if they just set a, so if they're not selling food, and they're just giving something away, do they have to pay the fee if they just have a table?
Yes, if they're promoting a business, they must, they must pay the fee.
How, how does council feel about our local businesses having the fee waived?
I feel like we should be treating all the vendors the same.
Agreed. There, there were three businesses that had, were visited, not by myself, and they asked about them coming down and being part of the opening days, and they said, "You know what? That's not what we're set up for. We, we don't find that to be, you know, competition. We don't have a food truck. We don't have the staff." And, you know, more power to those that can go.
I mean, in general, I learned from our borough manager, never waive the fees unless under the most exigent circumstances, correct?
That is true.
Okay.
Helen, I-
If I may clarify, it, it's really about, the way I, I said that is, in all fairness to everyone, it's very hard to waive a fee for one and then not another. I do understand that we want our local businesses to be present. I've struggled with this, because I do, I also spoke with some of the businesses, and, and I, I, I completely understand, they're struggling. So I, again, it's just trying to be fair across the board is really what I've been trying to promote, not to, you know-
At a recent meeting, that we were all together, we, we talked about how we could help promote the businesses, and we thought about, you know, doing, like, for the Oktoberfest and stuff, a bag with coupons and stuff. But from what I understand, we still have to charge them $25. So we need to talk to them to see if that's what they'd be willing to do, because right now, they've said, they don't have the manpower to even set up a table. So, but I think if we can work something out where we could, you know, if they can give, you know, whatever, we need some, some stuff to work, because I agree, we need to be able to-
Going forward, we should maybe have some kind of a, a method through which we can consider that, but I don't think we can do that tonight in anticipation of April 1. I think that's, and, and I think that, that Coach Bresler has enough to worry about with the baseball teams, that he shouldn't have to be concerned with who's setting up tables at, at the opening day.
People like the businesses that like to come down, you know, they're more than willing to be there, just that Morrisville Little League can't, can't support the permit fee for every business that does want to do that.
Yeah, understood.
If they're willing to come down and set a table, file means they'd love to have them.
Great.
So these are great concerns, and I've heard some of the same. And something, I just have a suggestion, and I don't even know if it's something that you could approve, Ms. Danko, but I know in the past, for businesses who maybe didn't have the manpower, the ability at the time, or just didn't want to be there for an event like this, I know former Mayor Ravella and some other people have done the option, just kind of like we just heard, giving out a, a gift bag. And if I'm not mistaken, you don't have to charge those businesses to put a menu or a coupon or something in that gift bag, and that's something you could give away to the people who come and still represent these businesses. Do you think that's correct?
So are you saying that the Parks and Recreation Committee would be giving out the gift bag with all the information in it?
If that was one of our events, yeah. Obviously, if this is that, we'd have to talk to them about it. But yeah, that is what I'm saying.
Yes. No, if there was something of that nature, yes. What we're really talking about is-
Oh, I know.
If someone puts a table up and they're handing out information, that's where the fee comes in.
Right.
But if, if Parks and Recreation would like to take it upon themselves to-
This time.
Right. I know. To create a gift bag, I think that's, I think that's absolutely wonderful. The other thing that I would really like to talk about in the future is gift bags for people who move into Morrisville, new residents.
Yeah.
With information to, "Welcome to Morrisville."
I agree.
Here's the, here's the phone number to the fire company and blah, blah, blah. So-
The MBA used to do that. Kitty, Kitty Westrop used to, to, to handle that. She worked with some realtors. I don't know what, where that stands. We also used to have a map of the town.
Well, since we have an MBA person here, we will take that under great consideration at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that would be wonderful. I think we should welcome people to Morrisville.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a good idea.
We have a motion on the floor.
Right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8I, call for a motion to approve a food truck festival with a band sponsored by Morrisville Borough to be held at Williamson Park, Sunday, July 16, 2023.
Can I make a correction there?
Yes, please.
It's kind of a little misleading. We have a band, but it's being paid for and sponsored by somebody else. So, and I'm sorry, that, that's probably my writing, but it's not meant that way.
Does that mean that the festival is sponsored by somebody else?
No, that we're going to sponsor the festival, but the band, with the band sponsored by, oh, I, yeah, I'm sorry, I rewrote it.
Of that, but so it's, so we're, now, let me ask you this. Is this in anticipation of, is this, is this contingent upon having alcohol available?
It's not contingent, but it needs to be. Why had us sponsoring it? Because-
No, 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 not, not sponsoring. I'm asking-
No.
Is this festival going to be, are you going to have this festival whether or not we have the ordinance changed?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, who's sponsoring the band? Economic Development Council.
Who is?
Economic Development Council, Morrisville.
So, so the food truck event may or may not have alcohol. We don't know what this-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My counselor reminds me, we need a motion before we can discuss this any further. I guess we, we never got as far as, can I have a motion on this?
I so move.
Okay. As, as you were, just a while.
So, so-
As you were saying, I should say.
We don't know if this, a festival will have alcohol?
Well, because we haven't passed the ordinance yet. So, you know, but we need to sponsor it and, or co-sponsor it, I guess, because if that ordinance does come and we decide to do that.
So what revenue are we foregoing by sponsoring events? So it's the fee, which is what?
Stage.
Just the stage. That's, yeah. The police, if there's alcohol served there, the police, the insurance, and all vendor fees, there'd be a license fee, you know, there'd be all this other stuff that we will get the revenue from.
Things that Mr. Holbert was talking about earlier, Tom.
But since we don't, Catherine, since we don't have an alcohol policy now, would you mind if we tabled this until we have one or not?
No, because I need to be able to, that's why I didn't put alcohol in there. I want it sponsored, so, because only sponsored events can serve alcohol. If we don't get that ordinance in, then I still want to have the festival. But the problem is, I need to, I don't want to go out and ask food trucks and stuff, because I have to do it now, you know, unless I have it approved to do it. Does that make sense?
For the same reason that the Winter Fest Parade gets approved now, so that they can prepare.
So, so I, I'd like to, I, I still want to get back to costs. So, so what is this going to cost us in terms of the police department and the insurance and et cetera, and, and the revenue lost? Like, it's the rental of the park, correct? Which is, what is that?
We don't have a fee for renting, renting the park. We just have a fee for renting the stage.
Appreciate the $300 fee.
$300 fee, and that's it. We will, all the food trucks will be required to have a permit, which they'll pay to the borough. If we do have alcohol served at the park, that ordinance goes through, the police presence will be paid by the people who are, who are doing the alcohol part.
Okay, so, so this festival is July 16. I can't see how, if we pass this in, in April or May, that you're going to be ready by July to have alcohol in the park.
We might not.
Yeah. So, so, so forget that there's alcohol. What, what, what would be the cost for, for our borough workers to clean it up, for the police department?
Thousands of dollars. You know what? This, I can understand that you want to have a figure, but we don't know that figure. And if it's not us doing the park, Helen, it could be Joe and Harry Smith have a party, and our men still have to go down and clean up.
I understand that we're-
I think it's a service that we're going to provide. Hopefully, we, this is how, we, we have to move forward, and this is what we do. We provide services to the public, give them the opportunity to, to take these services. Does it cost us a few hundred dollars? Probably. But it's, it's what you get in return for that, for that money.
But I have residents complaining and asking me where the EIT money is going, and then they see these, these parks and these festivals, and they're like, "So my EIT is going to have for a festival?"
Yes, I understand that was Mike Jaeger who was asking those questions.
There's a lot of people asking those-
Doesn't matter who was asking the question.
Correct. But what I'm telling you is, the, to accuse this administration of taking the EIT money and giving it to the park is absurd. That's not what's happening. There's $5,000, there's a $5,000 budget, and that was, is really quite healthy. And I think that what we are trying to accomplish will be accomplished within that budget.
Well, let me ask you this. If the only reason that we're sponsoring, that you're asking that the borough sponsor it is in case there is alcohol at the time, and that we need, that we're going to require that it at least be co-sponsored, why don't we just co-sponsor it, and then ask EDC as the sponsor of the band, if they're the sponsor for the event, to, to kick in the fee? Because, I mean, they're, they're in the process, as we just heard, they're selling a, a piece of property. They have, they're going to have a lot more revenue to spare than we do. So I, I think to, to, to put it, Ms. Sherlock, as a case where we're just trying to kill these festivals is, is not, is not really a fair, we're, what we're trying to do is we're trying to, to stretch the, the, the dear dollars that we, that this borough has as far as they can go, and at least be able to tell the, the, the public where the, where it's going, and have some ability, some transparency, and be able to track it. I don't think that's being unreasonable. I don't think that's being anti-progressive or discouraging people from, from experiencing Morrisville.
Mr. Paul, if I may, the, the discouragement is discouraging food trucks. We had, we had a food truck festival that was thwarted last summer by just a few people, and, and we also had someone who, who was working to, to sort of, I know that they wanted to work in conjunction with the food trucks for the opening day, but there was already a plan to have these food trucks. So I, and it comes from somebody who wasn't part of the planning in the original part of the planning. So that's, that addresses your, 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 I guess-
I don't understand what you just said.
Because you just, you just made a comment that you felt that I was thrashing about the, the food truck, and that I was, you know, dismissing someone who, who was trying to get food trucks. I was trying to tell the people that do not be afraid of food trucks. That's all I was trying to say. I mean, it's, it's almost as if when we say we're going to have a food truck event, everybody's ears go up, and it's like, "Oh, my gosh, we can't do that because-"
This has nothing to do with food trucks. You're missing the whole point. In fact, I'm interested to hear who you think thwarted the last food truck festival, because I'm not sure what that story's about.
Let's stop, let's stop.
You don't need, I have talked to you offline. I know our, our borough manager-
I think we should talk about that in public, frankly.
Our borough manager knows.
The offline discussions have, have got to end. We need to talk about these things publicly, because the innuendo is that anyone who opposes these festivals is somehow, we're, we're, we're undermining the community, and, and we, we have serious concerns- these festivals is somehow we're undermining the community and we have serious concerns. I don't know what Mike Jaeger or anyone else has said about this stuff.
Just stop, stop.
Excuse me?
Just, let's just stop.
I'm not, why do you tell me to stop? I'm not telling you to stop.
No.
He told me to stop.
So, when other people have festivals, and this isn't about the food truck, I mean, we have three festivals listed on our agenda tonight, maybe even four if I count. It's not about the food truck, per se. It's about co-sponsoring, Morrisville Borough co-sponsoring it. You know, other people have festivals all the time in other municipalities, and they get a real sponsor. They don't go to the township, and the township doesn't give them money. They go and they have, for instance, Ben Salem, when they have their music events, that is co-sponsored by T D Bank. They are able to go and get the dollars that are needed in order to hold these things. You know, you're coming to the borough, and the borough has asked the residents to pay a 1% E I T, and frankly, the residents are very angry about this E I T. And then you're just asking them like, oh, let's just give money away. So, that's where I stand on this. There needs to be a little bit more thought put into this on what you want the borough to spend their money on.
I think when I was given a budget of $5,000, that the borough did put thought into how much I could spend, and it was voted and approved upon. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate that you're representing a part of the community, and you have a right to do that. I think that, you know, the reason is that this is the Parks and Recreation Department or the committee, and in the past, the committee has sponsored various events. You haven't sponsored as many because you haven't had as many. But, you know, I do understand the concern of E I T, you know, people, they are very concerned, I've seen it. But this is impacting just our budget, which I spent only $300 last year of. So, I didn't mind it being cut, I understand, and I want to work within that budget. And so, that's why I'm saying that it'd be, it's our committee or, you know, our entity or whatever to sponsor this event, so we can have some fun things in Morrisville.
Well, as you point out, it's a committee of the council.
Yes, of course.
And it can make recommendations to the council, but council has the ultimate authority to approve or disapprove things. And it's got nothing to do, as far as I'm concerned, with E I T. I would propose the E I T and voted for it and advocated for it. I'm just trying to advocate for responsible government and being able to understand how we reach these decisions, what goes into it, what the costs are, and that we're playing fair. I want transparency and fairness. That's all, there's no other agenda that I have on this. And it's not, I don't think well, badly or well of food trucks, I'm neutral in food trucks. That's not the point. The point is this process. The process has gotten twisted so that if ever there's a festival, it automatically is teed up for the borough to sponsor it, and even though, as our council is just explaining what those fees, these fees are not made up, they're not gratuitous, they're there to at least cover some, not all, of the expenses that we incur. And that's different than having Joe and David, whoever you're talking about, Ms. Sherlock, at the park. These are things that we're sponsoring, and we deserve to have some understanding of what's going on and being able to understand what the costs and liabilities are going into it, and then we can gauge whether or not it's, we think it's in the public's best interest. But the idea that we're not supposed to talk about this is not conducive to a functioning democracy.
May I say something? I agree with the anger in the town of the taxes that we have and the E I T and whatnot. And I don't have a problem with the borough sponsoring these events. However, we need to focus on our priorities. Nothing at all was mentioned tonight about the daily potential kid getting killed in front of Grandview School in the morning when kids are getting dropped off. People see that every day, and it angers them. People drive down the streets and they're dogging and they're hitting potholes. I get it, it's probably a month or two to properly fix potholes. But if we took care of the situation with people passing other cars going 50 miles an hour on Palmer, West Palmer, and fixed potholes, maybe the idea of the borough sponsoring a food truck festival would be a little more profitable. We spent more time than I talked about food trucks than we did potholes and the disaster that's around the high school, Grandview School, early in the morning. And I get that's the school, but we're in charge of the roads, and this is not a slight at all towards George, because his hands are tied. We need 50 cops to handle the situation. But people see this every day. People are angry about what's going on at the school. People are angry about our roads, and we're talking about food trucks. This town does not give a rat's behind about a food truck down the aisle. They don't. I think they're nice, but it's not what the residents that elected us want. I'm done, that's all I had to say.
Where do you want to go there, ma'am?
Are you asking these questions about the dog park and whether any of these in the borough cost the borough? Why like this distance? Suggesting that the borough should get rid of the dog park? The dog park is well-used, cost the borough.
Well, so
Well-used, very well, many a park.
Thank you, the public comment period's over, thank you. Any further discussion on this before we vote? Okay, excuse me? No, we don't poll the audience, I'm sorry, that was public comment period, it's over. This isn't a dialogue, okay? You had an opportunity. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. Should we have a, do we need roll call on this?
Oh, yeah.
Let's have a roll call. Virginia?
Yes. Ms. Engelbert?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Paul? I'm sorry, Mr. Paul?
At least your reason for abstention.
I'm sorry, I have no credible reason to abstain. I'll vote no.
Mr. Lubin?
Can you circle back? I'm still thinking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Viness?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray? Ms. Lawl?
I would vote yes, except I don't think it should be sponsored by the borough, so I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
And Mr. Lubin?
Kind of, no.
Okay, it's board of four.
Mayor, yeah. The mayor is here and can cast a tiebreaker, excuse me, the mayor is here and present and may cast a tie-breaking vote or choose to have this delayed and tabled and think about it.
No, there's no need to think, this is a yes for me. Thank you, Virginia. Item 8J, call for motion to approve an Irish festival with food and music sponsored by Borough, Morrisville Borough, to be held at Williamson Park, Sunday, September 17, 2023.
I so move.
Second.
Again, I'll ask, is this also, is this contingent upon alcohol or either way?
It's not contingent on alcohol.
Again, I don't think any of these events should be sponsored by the borough.
Yes, I do. All the bands that have got for the events have all been provided by the Economic Development Council. They're also paying for the advertising.
My only comment would be the same as I had on the other one, which is that I think at most, the borough should co-sponsor, and if this, E D C should be sponsoring it and paying the normal fees associated with this event. But I recognize that's not the motion, so.
But I have a question, Mr. Paul. If we co-sponsor, what does that mean? Like, what is the obligation then if we co-sponsor? If M E D C picks up the fees and the band, then what part do we play in that?
I'll help with that.
Go ahead.
Would M E D C, when you say picks up the fees, would they pick up the event fee, the $300 event fee?
Is that
That's the only other fee there is.
That's what I'm proposing.
I just wasn't sure. I know that you had said that M E D C is going to pay for the band and the advertising. And then by the borough sponsoring it, the borough would be relieving the $300 fee. Is that, okay. I think that's what the question was.
No, the question is, by co-sponsoring, can we revive the fee and still be the, and the borough still be the co-sponsor? Mr. Holbert, this is an issue we talked about, you tell me.
So, yeah, it would be, yes, you can be involved in an event and still have all the fees be paid. It's, again, this is your policy decision of what you want the events to be and how do you want them to be brought about into, excuse me, the borough. So, yes, you could ask, you could still be a part of a co-sponsor, supporting, however you'd like to phrase it, but still have the other entity make sure they pay all the required fees that you would incense otherwise waive, in this case, that $300 stage fee.
Catherine, is in your mind, what you believe is that you have a $5,000 budget for Parks and Recreation, correct? So, in your mind, you're saying that $300 fee, if we sponsor, is being charged against your $5,000 budget? Am I correct?
It hasn't been, but it probably
Is that what you're looking in your mind?
Yes.
You want to use part of your budget to
It can be, yes.
Can she do that?
Or the borough can waive that $300 fee.
That's what we're talking about.
By the borough sponsoring the event, we're waiving that fee.
That's been the policy.
Yes, so
If we want to change the policy, then we can.
Sure, so we don't waive that fee. I mean, I'm sorry, I apologize. We do waive that fee when the borough sponsors the event, so that's what I believe some people are saying.
Yes.
That $300 fee is not being paid because the borough is sponsoring the event, so the borough is
Yes, we understand that. What we're saying, though, is can the borough co-sponsor and still charge the fee to the other co-sponsor?
Certainly, certainly, yes. If we had a co-sponsor, if we had another
As opposed to being the sponsor, but we're being asked to sponsor, so that's what the vote is for. So, any other discussion?
But I
Are you mending?
Carlita has a different outlook on this, though. Carlita, if I'm correct, was saying Parks and Recreation has a $5,000 budget. So, what she's saying is the Parks and Recreation Committee could take part of their budget and actually physically pay for that fee.
Approval of council.
With the approval of council.
Yes.
But it would provide the Parks and Recreation with less money to do the things that they would like to do. And the whole idea of sponsoring the event is to alleviate the fees.
Right.
So, it's not
But it doesn't alleviate the fees for vendors or anything like that. I mean, that's something that I think we can make a policy, and, you know, we just, it just has to, it isn't in the policies right now.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah.
May I go back to that original question? If we co-sponsor and the sponsor's paying for everything else, what part are we playing? Why co-sponsor?
Simply because, I'm told, we need to co-sponsor to be able to have sufficient control of the situation.
Oh, I thought that was just if there was alcohol.
That's why I asked Mr. Holbert. It's for anything. It's not just alcohol, it's any other things, but we're most concerned about it, we're more concerned about it with alcohol
Absolutely.
Events, but it's not
Exactly.
Restricted to alcohol.
And, Mr. Paul, you're exactly right. It does give us control over the event, what time it starts, what time it ends, you know, all of those kind of things.
But why is it that you think the Parks and Recreation should use its limited $5,000 budget instead of
Well, it was just
Instead of the E D C who can contribute, who might have, I don't know what their financials are, because I don't think they're made public, but why does the borough automatically step in their shoes and absorb those costs? Why should we absorb the costs if we have another, you know, ready, willing and able sponsor there?
They're sponsoring the music, which is a lot more than the $300.
Then throws the $300 more, too. Why not? I mean, that's all I'm asking, why?
I don't know if that's their obligation. I mean, I guess you could ask.
It's their obligation if those are the terms on which we approve it. But when you say, don't worry, we're going to sponsor it, you don't have to worry about it, obviously, you know, they'll keep their $300, not withstanding the fact that they should be working toward the same ends of doing what's best for this community and making all of our limited resources stretch as far as possible. This is robbing Peter and paying Paul. If we've got deeper pockets, fine, but I don't know that that's the case.
Why don't you look for outside sponsors?
I could do that, but what I need to know is that, because it takes, I have to plan so far in advance, and I'm trying to get these approved so I can start recruiting all that stuff. I can get some sponsors, you know, but the point being is, I've got to get this stuff approved now, so that, because that's how far in advance it books.
I understand that. I just can't do this if the borough is the sponsor. If they're a co-sponsor and you could get outside sponsors to get the fee, then you have my vote, but I just can't, I can't ask, I can't vote yes.
Mr. Paul, could you just call for the vote then, please?
Hold on, Catherine, correct any other discussion? Yes, please. Catherine, correct me if I'm, Scott, one second, please, thank you, I'm sorry. Correct me if I'm wrong, that a lot of these big company sponsors, which do like to help with things in communities, they need a month, two months, sometime even more to process the paperwork for these things. And again, you know, I've helped run the events before in the past, so I know that. So, I understand what you're saying when you're just trying to get to date. And I guess my biggest frustration here is we're talking about not having an event for the town, which we've been trying to do more and more and more over the last few years over $300. So, I just don't want to, I don't want to fall into the trap where we start to discourage people from wanting to help. Like, the M E D C has gone, in my eyes, above and beyond recently to try to kickstart and throw some money in and get them things going. I would like to keep them encouraged to keep doing so. So, that's all I have to say, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, my point is that it's easily disposed or, you know, tossed away as $300. That's a residence yearly E I T payment if they make $30,000 a year. So, someone struggling making $30,000 a year, they can say, wow, I just sponsored a food truck event. Again, I have a pothole in front of my street that's been there for three years. I almost got killed picking up my kid off at school this morning, but I'll sponsor a food truck event down the park with my contribution.
Just call for the vote.
Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Okay, I tried to, excuse me, Ms. Sherlock, I'll call for the vote when I'm ready to call for the vote, okay? Now, obviously, my point is lost on most of you. I'm not going to vote against this for $300, I agree with that. But I'm just trying to make everybody more aware of the things that we should be considering that are, in many cases, not even thought about, and now you're telling me I'm not even allowed to think about them, and I don't know that that's in the best interest of the community, but I'm ready to vote. Should we do this by roll, let's do this by roll call as well. Go ahead, Virginia.
Ms. Engelbert?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Mr. Viness?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lawl? Mr. Robinson?
No.
And Mrs. Sherlock? Five to three, so it passes.
Thank you, Virginia. Motion passes. Item 8K. Item 8K. Call for motion to approve the closing of South Delmore Avenue between East Bridge Street and Chambers Street from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday, May 20, 2023, rain date, May 27, 2023, as part of the Morrisville Business Association-sponsored car show. This is contingent upon PennDOT approving the revised eastbound alternate traffic route as described in the TE 300 application.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, let me comment on that since...
Thank you.
I'm president of the MBA. This is in addition to the, an amendment to the approval that you gave the MBA's car show last month. The reason we need the extra space is because, because our PR and our, and our advertising campaign has been extremely successful. I've contacted non-car clubs in the Bucks, Monco, and Mercer County area. They've all promised that they're interested and will have, be having, well, where the permitting, hoping that the members will attend. I contacted two of the American clubs, interested also. Contacted Hot Rides, Hot Rods, Hot Rides, excuse me, who's interested to the point that they're going to, they're going to sponsor an entire class. And he said, "I might be able to get you 75 to 100 cars on my own." So, we need more space. And the space we, what we need is basically the concerto fusion parking lot, which is, so we're just taking that little space, which will also help marketing and sales for Dairy Queen because this way, people wandering around Bridge Street can wander down to the right and go and see the extra cars and also, and also pursue, and also buy something from Dairy Queen. This is kind of win-win-win across the board. So, thank you, thank you for your positive vote. Questions, anybody?
That's good.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 8L. Call for motion to approve awarding the Morrisville Borough Hall Sewer lateral replacement project to Ben Franklin Plumbing for $17,048.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
So, you...
Mr. Paul, can I confirm who is the first in technical line? I apologize.
Nancy and Helen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So, so during the finance meeting, you had talked about this sewer replacement. Is this the only, so this is from the point of the borough to the street, correct?
Correct.
And it's only going to cost $17,000?
Correct. And I'll say this, if, if we do encounter any problems...
Right.
It could be more.
Okay. It was just a larger estimate given at the finance committee meeting. So, that's why I'm asking that it came in so much lower.
Yes.
Because it was like 60 grand.
Right.
Okay.
That's the roof cover, that all.
I get it. I just, you know, I get it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8M. Call for motion to approve request of Birdtown PA for the Morrisville Borough Public Works Department to perform work within the borough to reinstall three posts at prior designated locations and install a new post at Borough Hall along with installing four new Birdtown PA signs.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 8N. Call for motion to approve one of the two options for the ramp and railing to be used for the Bridge Street Crossing project on the Delaware Canal towpath.
So moved. Second.
But do we have to have the one we want?
We need to pick an option.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But you have to, first have to put it in the discussion.
Sorry.
So, so I liked option number two, which was the wire mesh.
So, what are we talking about?
And I like the rails for self.
On, on the canal path.
Rails.
Oh, that was in the drop?
You want a copy of it?
I don't care. Okay, so you got, you got to identify one of the options in the resolution?
I think we need to discuss.
We need to discuss it and either choose option one or option two.
I liked option two, which was the mesh.
I like option one.
Isn't it, Paul?
All in favor of option one?
Is that how we're doing it?
I don't know. You tell me how to do it.
Well, what, can we just take a poll? Can we take a poll first?
Okay, who wants option one?
I do.
Who wants option two?
I did, but I don't, I don't...
Abstentions, what? I'm sorry, can you do that again?
Yeah.
Option one. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, option one it is. So, can we have the motion to approve option one?
So moved? Or we just add it to the... okay, never mind. Sorry.
Okay.
So, are these two separate motions, then?
No.
Amending the original motion.
Amending, okay.
Option one, right.
All right, so who made this second?
I'm second. I'll second it.
He's so strong about this.
I used to make handrails years ago.
I respect your, your experience.
Expertise, yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, option one it is.
And may I please, Council President? Everyone, please understand, as I said earlier, this is a decision of all of the stakeholders. So, even though Council has decided that they like this, once all the stakeholders vote and send the information to the Historical Review Board, the Historical Review Board will be the entity that will make the final decision. So, so thank you for voting, but just be cognizant that we may get something different than you voted for.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, then we'll waive their fees next time. Item 8O. Call for motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the signing of the PennDOT CMAQ reimbursement agreement for the Bridge Street Crossing project on the Delaware Canal towpath.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. 8P, item 8P. Call for motion to approve the MEAC, and that's the Morrisville Environmental Advisory... committee, is it?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Riverfront Preserve tree planting at Morrisville Riverfront Preserve on one of the following dates, April 1, April 2, April 8, or April 9, 2023. Specific date will depend on weather, date, and time to be determined.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
You do know April 9 is Easter, right?
I do now. Any other discussion?
Does, does, I'm sorry, does this fall with the Easter egg hunt at all?
Doesn't matter.
I know, but it just like tears people into two such things.
I think we can hold two concepts at the same time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item 8Q. Call for motion to approve a jazz festival sponsored by Morrisville Borough to be held at Williamson Park Sunday, August 20, 2023.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
So, is this a sponsor, is this the Rec Committee?
I mean, the Parks and Recreation Committee? Yes, it is.
This is not the Michael Sherlock Foundation?
The money donated is for the Michael, the Sherlock Foundation.
The Sherlock Foundation is putting this on. We always pay for the bands. So, if the, if the three prior motions give me any ideas, this means that the stage might be paid for. Is that correct?
I know. Last year, we voted no to it because a council person shouldn't benefit from anything being on council?
She can waive her vote. It's not benefiting her. It's benefiting the Michael Sherlock Cancer Research Foundation.
And, and also, the money that I raised pays for the bands, which is how I offered this free concert in the park. And there is a, in fact, I think Catherine provided Mr. Lubin this evening with my $990 from the foundation because he had questioned it last time, which you're all welcome to see. Vote your conscience.
Well, my question is not specifically about the fact that this is, that this was the Michael Sherlock Festival, but we now have three festivals in July, August, and September on top of April 1 and all that. Do we, has, has Parks and Recreation, I know the, I guess I know the answer is the most rhetorical question, but has Parks and Recreation considered whether it's better to have more events and get people in the path of coming here or that if you have too many events, it dilutes the interest and you won't get enough attendance at any one of them to justify, to bring critical mass and justify holding the event? Have you thought about that or discussed that?
Yes, we have. And we've met with, with the group, with the Morrisville Economic Council. And there's probably 20 to 30 people there talking about what we want for Morrisville. And...
I'm sorry, what's the Morrisville Economic Council? I'm not familiar with that.
Development.
Development, I'm sorry. Sorry.
So, this is all about, these are all MEDC?
No, no, these are Parks and Recreation events that more, that this is a community that said they want more. Energy begets energy. I wouldn't go less, I would go more. There are communities around here that have an event every week in their parks. I'm not ready to do that because these are a lot of work on me and the committee. But I do want to see more activities in the park.
And I can say from general promoting for 30 years that a crowd builds more crowd. When you have an event, it builds people for the next time. You have one sporadically and you're not going to have people turn up. So, I think it is on the benefit of going toward more and less. But I do like the way it's being approached, a little more than last year, a little more next year. But, but yeah, as for bringing people to town, the more stuff we offer them, the more people we're going to see.
So, do these events, I forgot to ask for the other two events, porta potties, are they going to be there?
They will be there. Yes.
And who's paying for the porta potties?
We are, apparently.
If I can comment on that?
Yes.
I've been a proponent of the borough paying for a porta potty all summer long just because of the nature of the park, how it gets used, and having an extra facility. So, but that's really kind of fallen on deaf ears, deaf ears over the years. But I will say that last year...
I never heard the proposal. It's never reached my ears.
No, it's, well, we have conversations about it.
I've never had a conversation with this about you.
Okay, Bob.
About that with you.
Porta potties.
I mean, it's not a bad idea, but I've never, I've never heard it teed up that way. And maybe, and maybe that's, that's a good idea, especially if we're having a lot more festivals. But I don't think it's fair to say that we're not, that we, that we're ignoring that. I've never, I've never heard the proposal.
Okay.
Anyway, any other comments or questions? Okay, let's vote. Another roll call. Virginia, if you would.
Yes. Ms. Engelbert?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin? Mr. Menes?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Law?
No.
Excuse me. Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sherlock? Seven to one.
Thank you. Motion carries. And item 8R. Call for motion to approve advertising for bids on the Borough Hall roof replacement.
So moved. Second?
I'm not sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries. Civil Service Commission. One appointment as an alternate for the remainder of six-year term expiring December 16, 2025. Letter of interest from Matt Wiedenhoffer.
I would like to nominate Mr. Wiedenhoffer.
Second?
I'll second it.
Oh, I didn't need a second, sorry. Save that for later. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Other business?
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of things. One, I was just wondering if there was any word. I mentioned this last month from Gilmore with regarding the flood protection project. Like, is there any report? Or is there, is there a report of any kind?
I will have an update for the April meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then also, we received, I don't, I can't tell you the date of it, but we did receive something about the, from Amtrak regarding lowering the roadway in Washington Street. What's, what's going on with that?
I've been asked to place that again on the next month's agenda. We've been asked several months in a row to continue it to the next month's agenda. So, I don't know if it will be April because it was moved from February, March so far.
Okay.
So, if, the only thing I can tell you is, as soon as I know, it'll be on the agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have, this is a request, I guess this would be through the borough manager, though. The mural painting took place last Saturday with a large group of people. Of course, it's not complete. I think it looks great. They're, they're doing a good job, but it can't be done in a day. They need more time. And I'm just wondering, Mr., Mr. Kemp is actually on vacation this week and has the time, but is it possible that he could go down at his leisure throughout the week as long as he emails you first to tell him he's going to be there? He's not going with groups of people. It's just him.
Is there any way that he can get in touch with Lorraine at the borough office and tap off of the original event permit? Because I think that would be advantageous and then, and really to let us know Because I think that would be advantageous and then and really to let us know when he thinks he's going to be there.
Yes.
I think it's important for us to have the the dates kind of on the paperwork because if I'm getting emails here and there and I don't know, you do know what I'm saying.
Okay.
It's not a practice that I would like to start because I'll be inundated by all volunteers.
No, and you could just put every day this week and some days next week.
Correct.
So just have them all on the page.
I would accept an amended event application.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, I just want to make something, this has to do with something that happened in 2003. Some of us might remember that it happened, but back in back during that time, there was a train that was going to come through Morrisville, and it had nerve gas on it. And this town got in an uproar, and they they fought against it, and they won, and they rerouted that train. So what made me think of it was the train, you know, the terrible accident in Ohio. But why why I'm bringing it up is because it's REAC that keeps keeps Morrisville safe. I mean, everybody does to a sense, but they, in particular, this is something that they glammed on to, and they helped us be aware of it and fought for it, and we and they rerouted it. I don't, I can't remember exactly where they took it, but they didn't come through our town. And I'd like, it's just something else I'd like to say thank you for all the years that MEAC and all they've been doing for 20 years.
Anything else?
One last thing, I'm just listening to the Borough Manager earlier, she talked about the library budget. And so it's my understanding that there there was a meeting and the some and the hours were reinstated. And there's also, there was money to be found unless maybe because they got donations now, it's not going, there's not going to be any money in the any more money put in the budget for programs.
So I'd like to clarify, there was there was not a meeting regarding the budget.
No, I understand that.
There was an AFSMI labor management meeting with the library. That's what took place. It was a request on behalf of the library to me through the AFSMI union. But at that labor management meeting, there was discussion, and when we talk about the hours being reinstated, it there's no reinstatement of hours. The hours are what was requested to take place that is on the 2023 budget. There was a misunderstanding by the library employees as to how they're able to maneuver those hours. So within that meeting, we clarified how they can maneuver those hours, still continuing to have the library open, the amount of hours it's needed to be open to obtain the grant funding that they obtained. So that was the discussion, and they were very happy once it was clarified. It was, again, a misunderstanding. They didn't think that they could maneuver their hours, and I explained what they can do, and they've been doing that, and it's been working. The other item was, there was no funds for the summer programs. There were funds for the employees, but not for the extras. You know, last year, they had like Bubble Machine and, you know, different things, different types of programs that they would have for the younger children. So they would they would purchase things to have maybe a balloon clown and different things like that. So what we were saying was, we eliminated that from the budget because of the cost, saying, is there any other way to have these types of programs without having a balloon clown or without having some of these things? So Ms. Neff had said she would prefer to have the funds to be able to do those extras. So we petitioned her to get donations. And again, I had suggested two places, and she had one of them, she had she had gone on her own, she had actually gone on her own for both of them and was very successful. So again, the $3,000 is actually going to be donations that will be for those specific items, just for the summer summer club that will be taking place at the library. So if they want to do a
The library, that line still reads zero for programs.
Correct. It will read zero, but she she was able to get $3,000 in total of donations. So
I appreciate that, and I'm very grateful that she did that. But the budget that we have, that we were presented, it has the reduction of those hours.
Correct. And they're able to, they're, they are, they are able to run the library sufficiently with the reduction of those hours.
And when and when two of the staff members leave, which is expected to be this year, then 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 is there any change?
That's to be determined. I had, because this is personnel, I'd rather not discuss it in public right now, but I have had discussions with Diane and some of the the employees, so that will to be determined.
I also know that they did ask to meet with you, AFSMI, along with their their union representative, but when they got to the room, there were three other people there, and they were members of council. And I think that was inappropriate.
I was there at the request of the Borough Manager. That's all I that's all I can say.
Okay.
And I resent the fact that you think it's inappropriate.
It's intimidation.
By no means was it meant to be an intimidation at all.
Not not meeting with you, it's not.
Or or any council member.
That's the way, that, well, we're going to disagree, we're going to agree to disagree on that.
Well, I can say that the library employees and the AFSMI union representative, everyone left on absolutely
Good terms, I get that.
Good terms, and the meeting was absolutely positive. I met with the library again the week after, and I've been, the communication between them now, they've been communicating, we've been working together. Things have been absolutely phenomenal since that meeting. So I think it was very, very
Mrs. Sherlock, are you asking the question as as an individual, as a member of the union, as a member of council? In what capacity are you suggesting that's inappropriate?
As a as a member of council? I'm not in, I'm not in the union.
So you think, as a member of council, you think it's inappropriate that that the Borough Manager asked me to attend and I attended? That's ridiculous.
It was more than just you, wasn't it?
I was, when I was, when I was asked to attend, I was the only one from council coming.
Well, they did not know that they could have asked you to leave. All right? So to me, that says something.
Thank you for your support, and we really appreciate that, Ms. Sherlock. Thank you.
Let me say this. I had asked for an agenda from the union representative and the names of the people who would be present. They provided me that, and I, too, provided the names that would be present at the meeting back to the union representative. So this was, there was nothing hidden whatsoever. It was all to be a very positive move forward because of being concerned if if the library employees could not get the donations. We were actually sitting with them, coming up with ideas, and Mr. Lubin was actually trying to make some suggestions as, because he's the chair of the Finance Committee. Where could we possibly maneuver monies from the borough budget?
If I remember correctly, at the meeting, he said, well, we can just take it from parks.
If you remember correctly, you weren't there.
Not that meeting, at the finance meeting. So I don't know where the, I don't know where that money was would be coming from. I have some announcements to make, I, so I, but we don't have to talk about this anymore, but I still, I still believe that it was inappropriate for staff members to walk in to talk to the Borough Manager and find three council people there without other council people even knowing this was even happening, nor were they invited, but I would not have come.
Your objections are noted.
Thank you. So the announcements are on the first of April, this first of April, I know we have opening day, but we also have two other things happening, that's the canal cleanup, which seems to always come on the same at the same time. And so I don't want to take away from the, but there's two different types of people. You have people that are going to clean the canal and other people. It's also the hazardous waste collection, which is happening at the Bucks County Community College. And then on Saturday, May 20, there is a, an event at the Morrisville Free Library. It celebrates the charming and unique life of sloths. So it's from 2 to 3, and it's one of their programs. And the other one was about the car show, which Mr. Lubin has informed us of. Thank you.
Okay, anything with Borough officials?
I have something. So I just want to remind the residents that our businesses are still struggling after COVID. A lot of them have, and especially those that relied on the state, New Jersey state workers to come over. So I'd just like to remind them, if you can, to try and do local and not go outside of the borough. Obviously, you can, but our businesses, some of them are on the brink of actually closing because they don't have the, they didn't get the COVID money, they don't have the customers, they lost some of their customer base, and it would be a shame if if some of these businesses that I speak of actually do close. So eat local.
Thank you, anything else? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Adjourned.